Services Committee to order at noon. First item on the agenda is approval of the agenda, and the Chair would like to add item E, a brief report by the DHHS. With that in mind, the Chair will entertain a motion to adopt the agenda.
So move.
Thank you, I'm hearing motion and support. Any questions on the agenda? Hearing none, all those in favor will please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Public comment? Public comment is now open, three-minute limitation. Please approach the podium and tell us who you are, three-minute minimum, or three-minute maximum. Thank you. Is there public comment? Public comment is open. Last call for public comment. Public comment is now closed. We move on now to committee items. We are at the minutes from last month's meeting. The Chair will entertain a motion.
Support.
Thank you, we have a motion of support to adopt last month's minutes. Any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor will please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Item B is appointments. We have a number of them today. I believe all of them having to do with the Department on Aging Advisory Council. Let's see. I am hearing a motion to nominate by term expiration for December of 2027. Would the motion, Commissioner Snell, be to nominate those who have applied and who are already sitting on the Department on Aging Advisory Council?
Yes.
Thank you. Is there support?
Support.
Thank you. Any comments to the applicants, those being Rick Seigers, Dennis Hayek, Patricia Spink, Peggy Younglove, Shanice Davenport, Richard Pfeifer, and Zachary Watson? Any comments to the motion? Have you got the motion, Madam Clerk? Okay. Sorry, we tried to make it clear. It's hard to say. Okay. All those in favor of the class of 12, 2027, will please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you.
I would move the nomination of the three applicants.
Okay. There are actually four. The motion is to recommend to the full board the appointment of four members of class of 12, 2026, those being Diane Derby, Sharon Best, Brian Bowman, and Tina Gross. And we will continue to advertise for those positions that remain open. I heard the motion was their support.
Tina Gross is on the second page.
Sorry? She's on the second page. Okay, there she is on the second page, okay? Thank you. Oh my gosh, I thought I was screwing it up. All right, any, I'm sorry, go ahead, Commissioner Bear.
Did I hear you say we'll be voting on the four that have terms ending in 2026?
There are four applicants for terms ending in 2026. There's three of them, there's three of them on the first page and one on the next The three on the first page are Diane Derby, Sharon Best, Brian Bowman, and the one on the next page is Tina Gross.
Tina.
Do you see that?
The one that I have, Tina Gross, is on Department of Aging in advance. Okay, now I'm catching up to you, thank you.
Very good. Okay, so the motion is to appoint those, or to recommend those four to the full board at next week's meeting. All those in favor of those four candidates will please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Did we muddle that enough, Madam Clerk? I think Darius did, yeah. Yeah. Good. We now move to item C, which is the MSU Extension, 2026 MOA Approval Request. Thank you for being here.
Good afternoon, everyone. Mary Bowling from MSU Extension, and you have before you our standard MOA, Memorandum of Agreement between the university and the county. And each year we come before you after you've passed your budget, which congratulations for passing your general fund budget, and we ask you to recommend the signing of this for the full board. So I'm here to answer any questions you have, or anything else I can answer.
Okay. Let's get a motion on the floor. Let's hear a motion to adopt this MOA. Thank you, Commissioner Snell and Commissioner Willis. Now, questions to the MOA? This is, just to administration, this is consistent with our budget approval? Very good, thank you. Any further questions as to the MOA? Hearing none, all those in favor of its adoption or its recommendation to the full board will please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Merry Christmas to you. And now, the Department on Aging's monthly report. Madam Director is here.
Just a few updates on the Department on Aging and your attachment. Sorry. Again, happy holidays to everybody, and just a few things to update on my monthly report. We had our Statement of Contract Award with Wellwise Services, and last month I had brought forth the contract award that was for the month of October. This current contract award will go through December. And again, they're still waiting on the federal funds, but we're thankful that Wellwise Services is using some of their reserve funds and going ahead and putting the grant dollars forward, and we'll make some adjustments once the actual awards are known on the federal side. So we appreciate them for helping to support the work that we do in the community. Just to share a few things with holiday giving, definitely the Department on Aging is the season. We just had our dinner dance last week, over, I think, 140 people attended, so they had a fabulous dinner, listened to a great band. Definitely the room was full, so there's lots of excitement. And I just wanted to bring a few different things. I know the pictures don't always do justice, so we had the blankets that were made with Granny Square Group, and they made over 75 blankets that we could hand out to seniors in the community that could use that. Kind of pick-me-up for the holidays, and so we appreciate their work that they do throughout the year. So if you know of a person that likes to crochet, men or women, we have a mix within this group, they meet on Tuesdays, and they put these fabulous blankets together to be given to the Department on Aging and other organizations in the community. Or if you're somebody that has that box of yarn in your storage areas and you're not using them, they always take donations. So, again, they're very appreciative of people when they're able to donate, and they definitely put it to good use. And then, we had the Country Stitches, their patrons, and again, I don't think justice is given with pictures, but I thought I'd bring one. You can see a lot of time and work done into putting these together, and these were donated so that we could hand these out during the holiday season to people in the home-delivered meal program. It definitely is a fun time to be a service provider, when you're able to kind of get out there, see the people, and break up their days with little pick-me-ups such as this. One of the other things that we're doing is we have two churches. We have Arbor Grove Congregational and First United Methodist, and they donated presents to over 40 seniors that were people that may not have somebody in their life that would be able to spend the holidays with them. So we look at different peoples that we assess throughout the year and kind of keep them in mind if these opportunities come about. I know we actually even had one individual call last week on their own and wanted to adopt a senior. And for that person, we recently assessed somebody that doesn't have like blankets, pillows, sheets, things like that. There's a lot of things that we may take for granted that people have, and they might not. So we're appreciative of individuals that reach out to us that want to do things for older adults in our community. Rolling into that, recently with Dawn Foods, they came in and packed emergency meals and painted soup bowls, but they also reached out regarding a backpack program that they're putting together. They're looking for different sponsors in the community, and what they're doing is putting kind of a shelf-stable supply bag together for not just seniors, but for families in the community. What they're hoping to do is to give us between 50 to 100 bags that we would have available, and I don't see this going towards people that are in like home-delivered meals because they already have that nutritional support. But if we had somebody that we're doing an assessment for and there's a need in the home, we would be able to provide the bag at that time. So we also are putting our brochures in there, so if there is somebody that's receiving it, they can see all the different services that we have to offer, whether it's our nutrition sites, our homemaker services, things like that. So more to come, and I'll definitely bring a bag when we receive them. They're working with Jacob, with Grow Jackson on this program, so it's a good community effort to support people that might be food poor in different ways. With Consumers Energy, we were contacted by their green team. They were kind of looking for ways to support older adults doing things with activities. And so they kind of did kind of like a drive for arts and crafts, and they supported like our craft and chat group, our painting class, the Granny Square Group, and they brought a bunch of items in. There's a couple pictures there of some of those items coming in. So definitely people were happy with the supplies, and again, that just helps us to spread our dollars more when we're getting donations like that and support different programs, and just support the great work that the enrichment coordinator does. For the moment of excellence, what I kind of wanted to highlight was just the meal that our kitchen team put together over the holidays. That Wednesday right before Thanksgiving, we served 792 meals between the congregant program and the home-delivered meals. You can't see under that turkey picture there, but there was a fabulous stuffing. We had a senior call, and he said that the stuffing was better than his mother's. So, if that is not a compliment. So, again, those little pick-me-ups, the team did a great job. It's a lot of meals to get out right before the holidays, and really just trying to provide that nutritional support across the community. And then, after my report was done, and that Monday, right after the holiday, we did have a senior call, and she was talking with the enrichment coordinator, and of course, we had the snow just right during that holiday weekend, and she wanted to make sure that we were open, and she said, "Thank goodness you are open today. My family was good to me and brought me food, but I have been home for four days sitting in this apartment." She said, "I need social, I need music, I need people, I need this place so much. Thank God for all of you, I am going to clean my car off and see you soon." So that's what we do, what we do.
Questions for the Department on Aging? Thank you, Danielle, and to your crew for all the good work you do. We appreciate it very much. Chair will entertain a motion to receive the report.
So move.
Thank you, Commissioner Willis and Commissioner Bear. All those in favor will please say aye. Aye? Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
And now to item E, that would be the Department on Health and Human Services. Sorry, we're going to do the DHHS quickly in advance, sorry, Destiny. Thank you, Jackie, for being here, Madam Director.
Thank you for working me in. Good afternoon, everyone, and happy holidays to all of you. Can you hear me? Better? Okay. I have a brief update, which is good since I hadn't made my way in today. So, our childcare fund update, very early in the fiscal year, so we're under budget, doing well there, and we'll continue to keep you posted as we move ahead. We're heading into the colder months, so for our assistance payments and for our community, we are seeing an uptick, of course, in our state emergency relief requests. So these requests assist with emergency needs like utility shut-offs, food assistance, preserving heat and electricity, and some funding for housing. So we're heading into that season and certainly have those front and center to assist our community. Due to the federal government shutdown that just recently ended, we had some back and forth with our SNAP benefits, as most of you are aware. They were uncertain for a time whether it was a full distribution, half distribution, but recipients are now receiving their full benefit. We also had a couple sessions of a community roundtable with community partners in the community, both virtually and in person during the time of the SNAP uncertainty and the shutdown to rally together to figure out how to best serve our community. That was well-attended by various community partners. Again, always thankful for the partnerships we have in the community and such a collaborative place that Jackson is. We are under new time-limited food assistance requirements that began on December 1st. Michigan was one of the states that submitted a time-limited food assistance waiver. Following these changes, the waiver has been approved for 15 counties and six cities effective November 1st of this year through October 31st of '26. Jackson is not one of the approved counties, but we are one of the approved cities. So the city of Jackson will be on a waiver until October 31st of '26. All of the recipients that are receiving food assistance or new applications will be screened for the new requirements and then made aware of the changes quickly, as we're able to do. And really what this means for folks is that there'll be a set of requirements that they need to adhere to, to have food assistance, and for those that don't qualify or meet the requirements, it's really when they don't meet the requirements, they're allowed, let's say, three months and a 36-month period that they would be affected. So just some changes. There is a lot of requirements, of course, anytime new policy or any federal legislation is passed, and we'll do our best to communicate well with our community and make sure we're serving those that need. Moving on, yeah.
Commissioner Bear, please.
Oh, I'm sorry?
I just heard it from that way, I thought I was telling you. Go ahead, Commissioner.
I'm just going to ask, could you?
Mr. Roverton, yes.
Thank you. Could you give us an example, what are these new requirements? I haven't really heard this.
What are the new requirements?
Yeah.
Okay, I can kind of go through a couple, would that be helpful? Okay, well, we increased the age limit from, so new age limits 18 to 64. Individuals who are deferred from, there's a lot of policy language in here, I'm going to try to do my best to get around this, but from the general work requirements are deferred from the time-limited food assistance, with the exceptions of individuals ages 60 to 64. So there's some guidelines around the deferment, so that's kind of where I'm at. So parents or other household members with responsibility to care for a dependent child under 14 are deferred. There can only be one designated caretaker. Individuals who are a member of a food assistance group that includes a child under the age of 14, even if the child under age of 14 is disqualified or not eligible, they're deferred as well. A new deferral added for Native Americans, urban Indians, and California Indians, and that's the language that is in the policy there. Deferrals ending, so the deferrals that are ending, homeless individuals, veterans, individuals aged 24 or younger and in foster care on their 18th birthday. So I am going to give you some information where you can find some more about this. It's on our MyBridges website, so just for state of Michigan, it's M-I for Michigan, Bridges, as it sounds, and that's the website. There's a notification link at the top that'll take you to all the new information and the policy requirements. So recipients, real quickly, employment, work at least 80 hours per month, 20 hours per week average, or receive monthly average earnings of at least 20 hours per week multiplied by the federal minimum wage. Michigan Works Agency, our employment and training program, of course, is available, participate 80 hours per month, 20 hours per week in an employment and training program, also meets the requirements. Let's see.
So it's like able-bodied people need to work?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, and there's, again, there's some added deferrals, and then there's some folks that are taken off of the deferrals, and I think that's some of the nuances within the policy changes that are important to pay attention to. But there's a whole way to read through most of these things without me having to say everything on that website, and so, and it's on our Michigan.gov website as well, so you should be able to find it.
So, and how is this different? Was it, you didn't have to work before to get?
Yeah, and we were on a waiver for a long time.
So I could just receive, okay.
Yep, so it's the waiver that's ending, if that makes sense. Yep.
Commissioner Willis has a question.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So quickly for you, do you see any unintentional disparities or any challenges that this will bring, or?
I don't think we're far enough along yet to know. It just started this month, so I think the next time I'll report, I can provide an update on what we've seen so far, but I think, of course, when I look at the folks that are deferrals that are ending, especially our homeless individuals, there's such a need and a lot of unhoused folks that are struggling just to survive, and so that is scary, and the veterans the same. So it's the deferrals ending. I think that I'd like to be able to report on next time, or at least see what we're doing within those categories. That's what jumped to the front for me, I think for everybody else listening probably.
Yeah, I know it's early, just wanted.
Yeah, it is early, but we will see, we'll see what happens.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
Continue? We good?
Yes.
Okay. So, real quickly, our Holiday Angels program, formerly known as Angel Tree, we assist families receiving food assistance in Jackson County with Christmas gifts for families and children. Each year, the past several years have grown in our capacity to provide for our families. This year is no different. We've reached our highest number yet at gifts for 1,390 children, roughly 540 families. Huge collaborative effort, businesses like Two Men and a Truck are arranged for our gift delivery, they pull up into our building, and we unload truck after truck after truck of gifts. Gift distribution this year is December 15th through Friday, December 19th. So we're excited about that. Operation Good Cheer provides gifts for our youth currently in foster care. Those gifts have arrived and will be distributed to our youth in care over the Christmas holiday. And then, following that, there is just the list, as usual, of community partnerships we're involved in, and DHHS meetings, that was attached to my report as well. That's all I have today.
Questions for Director Caraffino. Chair will entertain a motion to receive the report.
So move.
Thank you, Commissioner Williams and Commissioner Willis. All in favor will please say aye. Aye? Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you, Jackie. And now, on to the medical care facility. Madam Directors here, thank you for your patience.
Good afternoon, everyone. Okay, so I have attached my report. I did include just a few slides about quality, because we haven't had a quality update in a moment, so I just wanted to share a little bit with you on that. So first here is a ranking of all of the facilities here in the Jackson area, so this is considered our core competition, if you will. So this would be our market area, and you can see that Jackson County Medical Care Facility remains as one of the top providers here in this area. On the next slide, you can see our current ranking, so overall, we have a ranking of a five-star. Overall, we have four stars in quality, four stars in survey, and five stars in staffing. We are one of two homes with a five-star overall rating in our market area, and one of two homes with the five stars in staffing. We have the lowest nursing turnover in our market area of 26.5% for the last rolling 12-month period, and the lowest RN turnover rate in our market, and 10th lowest in the state at 5.4%. So I thought that that was good for you to see. Just over the last couple years, we've seen that nursing turnover rate go from like about the 46% down to that 26%, so that is a nice metric to be able to share with you. Moving on to finance, for the October financials, revenue was $2,583,709, which was $65,846 behind budget. Expenses were $2,666,191, which was $21,204 behind budget. Our net position was $83,482, which was $87,050 behind budget. As you can see, census for the month of October was a challenge for us. We had an unexpected respiratory illness that we had a number of residents struggle with, so that brought our census down, and we had a much more difficult time recovering in the month of October than we have previously during the year. So our census was 3.91 bed days behind budget. We did have 44 admissions and 49 discharges. Year-to-date financials, revenue is $25,776, which is $115,960 behind budget. Expenses have been $27,338,865, which is $1,021,320 behind budget. And once again, the major contributor to this has been health insurance costs over this year and some overtime costs, and we've talked about that periodically over the last several months. So change in net positions from operations is negative $1,638,88, which is $1,137,279 behind budget. Overall, our census has averaged at 182.16, which is about 1.39 bed days behind budget for the year in total. We've had 467 admissions and 466 discharges. If you move to the next slide, I just want to show you the census trend line and why those numbers are significant. So at the bottom there, you'll note that this year we've had 65 more admissions than this time last year, and 64 more discharges. So as we're looking at the census issue, this isn't an issue of a lack of need in the community, it is the difference between having more short-term residents and the churn of people coming and going so quickly. So I did want to share that because we are seeing a significant increase in the number of residents that we're servicing overall, but that creates a lot more instability in the census numbers. And you can also see that dip in October compared to the previous dips, took longer for recovery, but we are back above the budgeted census as of last week and are maintaining there. In our additional financial narrative, AR accounts receivable days out continues to be below our goal of 54 days, we are at 47 days. I did want to address cash on hand, so if you look at the financials that we provide... I did want to address cash on hand, so if you look at the financials that we provided you, you'll notice the cash on hand number is much lower than what you're used to seeing, which shows a drop to 20 days cash on hand. Now, there was a billing delay on, with our Medicaid payment, so it arrived a week later than usual, which caused the cash on hand number to look lower at the end of the month, so we just wanted to make sure we addressed that. This was a one-time facility-based issue, as our biller was trapped in Jamaica due to the hurricane and was unable to submit the Medicaid billing at its regular time. So after the receipt of the Medicaid payment, cash on hand is estimated at 32 days cash on hand, which is sitting much closer to where we were last month. Again, we still have the repayment to Medicaid that we have to do, we're expecting that invoice sometime around September of 2026, in the amount of 1.17 million. This amount does not include any money currently invested or MOE funds, which is an approximately, approximately $4.5 million in additional funds, and we have no additional MOE requests for the remainder of this year. Is there any questions that I can answer for you?
Questions for the medical care facility. Commissioner Williams, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Remind me, the fixed rate in which we charge, I mean, well, I said that backwards, I'm sorry. The rate in which we charge is a fixed rate, is that correct?
Well, it depends on the payer source.
Okay.
So for private pay, it is a fixed rate, and that's $460 a day. For our Medicaid residents, that rate is determined by the amount that we have spent on providing care two years prior, so they make that determination based on a cost report we provide, and it's set through the next fiscal year. And then for Medicare and managed care, that's determined by the resident's acuity when they come into the facility. There's an assessment that's performed by nurses, which determines what their, their reimbursement we receive for their care will be, and that's typically somewhere between $550 a day to upwards of $600 a day.
Thank you. So I, I'm just noticing, well, the, you know, we, we keep finding ourselves in the red, you know, kind of month after month, and so I appreciate your leadership in helping to pull us out of that. We've had some months that were better than others, and so I do want to acknowledge that, but we're, we have to figure out when and how we can kind of stop the bleeding here. And so I'm wondering if, if there's ways to increase rates, keeping in mind the, the cost of what we're already doing, so I, and the charges that's being passed on, so I'm aware of that. But then I'm also wondering, where are areas in our budget that we can cut, that we can eliminate, or at least lower, so that we can at least get, get rid of some of the variances that we're seeing in our expenses side? And so I'm just curious, and I know these are questions, I'm sure you've already kind of ran through, but, but I'm just curious if there's other things that we need to do, maybe we need to think outside of the box a bit to, to help us with these variance numbers, so. Some certain, I'm not the, the great accountant that we have here with us, but I would be more than happy to engage in conversation, you know, outside of this meeting, just to see what we can do, because I, I just don't want us to continue, you know, years down the road, and, and we're kind of, you know, having the same conversation, because this is certainly a, a great source in our community, and I want it to be here for forever, but if we keep having, you know, quarter after quarter after quarter with, with worsening numbers, I'm afraid of, of what the future might look like, so just whatever I can do.
Thank you, Commissioner Williams. And just to answer a little bit of that very complex question, so with Medicaid, which is the majority of our residents that we serve, that's about 75% to 79% of the residents that we serve, the cost of care is what drives our reimbursement. So from year to year, our cost of care is based on two years ago's cost. So that already puts you behind the eight ball when it comes to managing expenses. But the other thing that's important to note is that Michigan is a cost-based reimbursed state, which means that this is very contrary to most business, but for us to increase revenue in the Medicaid area, we have to spend more. And so as we're looking at this, and we're seeing we're in the red, we are in the red, but what's going to happen in two years from now is that's going to cause an increase in reimbursement. And so I think it's balancing the, how do we build the reimbursement rate at a sustainable rate? And, and that's a big conversation that the board has been having.
So I have a follow-up question, if I may, Mr. Chair. This, my next question may alter what, what you've stated, so I'm wondering, in the, I know this might, I guess, hurt us in the long run, I think, now that I'm thinking through this, is there a possibility to take in less clients at this time? But again, based off what you're telling me, if I'm understanding correctly, if we do that, then two years down the road, those numbers might change.
Correct.
I see.
Yep. And that's where cost-saving measures also become a little bit challenging, because if we cut costs, then that also decreases our rate in the future. So trying to deal with the now and look at the future, it's a really, it's a really delicate balance, especially with the level of Medicaid that we provide for.
Thank you. And then finally, the, some years ago, I would, had made mention to you about my marketing director, we've since have brought that person on. Are we continuing to see positive markers for that in terms of intake?
Yes.
Perfect, okay.
Yep. And, and again, that can be evidenced by the increased amount of admissions that we've seen this year over previous years as well.
Okay. Well, let's, if we can, outside of this meeting, if we, you and I could sit down and talk a little bit, just a little bit more in-depth on some of the numbers here, and then I also have a couple of possible ideas for marketing, or maybe some questions about marketing, I'll say it that way, and we can continue to go from there.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you so much for what you do.
Yes, thank you.
Nothing further, Mr. Chair. Chair Shaw, we'll have a comment.
So I wanted to share something with the committees, and so a better understanding can be had of what we're doing. In the macro picture, we're caring for the indigent population at our medical care facility, and with that, we're using what are called Medicaid dollars. And Medicaid dollars does not reimburse at the same rate as Medicare dollars do. So we've agreed that we will have a certain level of rehab Medicare patients in our facility, which will supplement our costs across the board. But at the end of the day, the Medicaid population, or the indigent population, or the people that can't care for themselves, the most fragile, are the ones that the medical care facility is supposed to be their primary group. With that, the community has chosen to raise a maintenance of effort millage. And while her bookkeeping system and the backward way we fund the medical care facility, any deficit is made up with an appropriation from this board of the maintenance of effort fund, okay? So effectively, we are setting on the savings account that everyone else in the community has put money into, for us to be able to take care of that aunt who didn't take care of herself while she was going through her life, or the uncle, or that stepbrother, or the person, or, you know, the homeless person, or, or what we used to call the hobos, you know, whatever, whatever terminology you'd like to use. And that's where, that's why the funding on this seems to be so misconstrued or misaligned, is we're working with a budget that we want to function very similar to either our homes or our businesses, or our churches, or, or something like that. But at the end of the day, there's this, this, this organization called Jackson County that has this maintenance of effort fund that has been set aside by the people of the city of Jackson to take care of these people. And that's why we've moved the money every year, when she comes and requests, this is the amount of money we need to move, and that's how the system works. And I know it gets, it is very confusing. The only advantage that I had is that I've sat through this with five different administrators at the medical care facility, and again, a very, very intelligent individual has explained it to me repeatedly. So yeah, so, but I think what we need to decide is, and this is not, this is not me being mean or anything like that, but do we deem five-star care where we want to live? Because five-star care today becomes a different measured care when we get compared to the next time they do an evaluation. So that's our new zero, is our five-star quality right now. And that's, that's the different things that the DHS board is wrestling with. Am I correct?
That, that has been part of the conversation, yes.
Yes. So yeah, so that's everything. In a nutshell, it's kind of a bag of nuts, it's not just one nut that we've got to try to figure out. So yeah, so, and, and the other side of it is, is that you don't want, when you're dealing with, with government, you only get to build stuff in for replacement all at once. Okay, so if we have to go through and replace 256 beds at the medical care facility, that could break us. So what we've done is we've created different tools within that funding system to be able to not, not have to deal with all of that all at once. So yeah, so that's where all of this comes in. And it's a, and it's a big machine with a lot of cogs and wheels to, to follow the whole thing.
Mr. Overton had a comment.
Just a quick question. The, the millage we have, the maintenance of effort money, how does, how does that influence, or, or does it at all influence the amount of revenue you receive from other?
So the maintenance of effort payment that you make to the state, they, they show it to the federal government, they do a matching, they have a matching program, and then that comes back to the county medical care facility, so this is the same across every county, it comes back to them as part of their Medicaid rate. So that's what sets county medical care facilities aside from the general nursing home community. There's two different classes of nursing homes, there's a Class I facility and a Class III facility. County-owned homes and hospital-attached long-term care units are considered Class III facilities, and receive that additional rate based off of the money that you pay from the MOE account to the state.
Is that a one-to-one ratio? So for every dollar we put in, they give us $1 back, or do they give us more than $1?
That is a question that I'm not sure that I know the answer to, because I don't necessarily see the invoices that, that you guys pay on our behalf for the MOE.
Okay. Well, I'm just curious, because, you know, some states are donor states and others are receiver states. Michigan's been a donor state, I just wondered if it'd fall, fell over into that kind of category as well, but good to know. But yeah, if you can find that out, that'd be helpful.
Yeah, absolutely.
Because it'd be good to know one way or the other. So if, if we give more money, do you receive that plus, you know?
Well, it's, it's still based on cost, so even what you're charged from the state is based off of the cost of care that, that we have shared with them, that we provided. So the rate that they charge you is based off of our cost of care as well, so it kind of keeps it, it's, it's not like we could, you could donate more funds to the state, which would enhance our rate.
Oh, that's what I was getting at, was could, can we up our giving to, to get a little more on the other side?
No, unfortunately.
Darn. Okay. Thanks.
I wish it worked that way.
Destiny has the, the DHHS board adopted its '26 budget, I know they were talking about it the other day.
So no, it is not finally adopted, that'll happen in the December meeting, there was a few more tweaks that they asked me to make to the final budget.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Overton, I wonder, it probably wouldn't be that difficult to have Cecilia give us a report of the cash flows in and out of the MOE, just so we can kind of see what the history has been. I know there's some interest charges and bond payments and things that we pay from MOE, but I think it would be good to know where that stands, especially in light of the declining cash balance at the MCF, and, you know, what's, what's over the horizon for us on that? So I'll ask, if you can do that, Mike, for next month's meeting would be fine, just to kind of the history and where we stand with it, okay?
Do you want to go back five years?
I think that's long enough, yeah. Yeah, that, that gets you to the COVID time, which was funky.
It might actually be beneficial to go back six, because that's when we used MOE money for the re, the renovation project, but after that, it was only for the bond interest payment in the 1989 retiree health insurance, so.
Okay. Further questions for the MCF? Thank you for sustaining our, our questions.
My pleasure.
Chair Luntanatein motion to receive the report.
A move.
Thank you, Commissioner Williams and Commissioner Baer. All in favor, please say aye. Aye, any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you. I hope you all have a happy holiday.
Merry Christmas to you. And now Veterans Semiannual Report. Mr. Director, good to see you.
Good afternoon, all. Phil McCaskill with the Veterans Affairs Office, giving this report. The first page we have here is just some brief bullet points. One, our Veteran Committee Board is sitting full with our four, four, four members. We also have the American Legion, who brings in a service officer once, once a week to help with filing claims in our office. They're going through a transition right now with the retirement, so they're training a young lady, and of course, with the government shutdown, it's caused her a delay in getting her accreditation, so I don't know how this is going to work out in the next couple of weeks, but we're gonna, or months, but we'll work through it and get her, help get her trained, so that way she can help assist the veterans here in Jackson County. We answered over 1,481 phone calls from May to October in the office. Our phone traffic is just unbelievable. I mean, people call, and no telling what their questions are, but we do field a lot of calls. We also made 569 appointments from May to October, and that's actual visits to the office. There are some claims that we can do for pre-existing customers that we've had, clients that are already in the system, that we can do over the phone. So it's a nice ability with our, with my accreditation, I can actually take their claim over the phone and submit it directly through what they call the direct submit port hole that the VA's put together. And we also, I just signed an MOU with the Dearborn Vet Center. Basically, what we've done, and this happened back in the previous director, with Dearborn Vet Center, they provide a licensed medical, or mental health social worker to come out to Jackson County and provide office hours two times a month on Thursdays, and she sees clients on a one-on-one basis, gives them mental health counseling, and anything that, you know, when it comes to mental health, because sometimes getting into the VA outpatient clinic can be a little bit of a challenge because of the, the abundancy. And one thing nice about the Dearborn Vet Center is all of their records and all of her progress notes are uploaded into the veteran's system, so that way they're part of the progress note that a mental health provider can help, help give them the assessment of where they're at. So it's a huge service, it doesn't cost the county anything other than her people come here, she sets up her own appointments, she, she does all that, so it's a nice service because, you know, believe it or not, you know, the only resource we have is our 811, where she provides that sit-down, and it could, it makes, it's huge when it comes to mental health here in, in Jackson County. The next slide, I provided just an overview of veteran services, because I know that you guys get asked out in the community, what does our veterans' office do? It's, this is just a, just a snippet of what we do, but I wanted to provide an overview such as, we have a centralized database. overview such as, we have a centralized database that we use for a form generator and also records that is paid for by the Michigan Veterans Affairs Agency. That allows, it allows us to generate forms, but it also allows us to link into the coalition of the VFW, DAV, Vietnam Veterans of America and the American Legion. We all use this database. So when I see someone here from Jackson, and let's say they venture off to the Ann Arbor VA, that service officer that they may come in contact with can look at the notes that we put in. So it allows for us to provide services throughout the system. And we have a little bit of a note-taking that we can put in there and they can see. So that way you're not, sometimes you can do a application for a veteran that would harm the veteran because of the way the timing is on intent to files and stuff like that. So the database is hu- huge and it's nice that the MVAA picks that up, the Michigan Veterans Affairs Agency, there's the cost. So it's nice for that. Uh, compensation claims are exactly that. Those are compensation claims for veterans that were hurt while on active duty. We file those. Appeals, we don't, we don't traditionally do the appeals. The service organizations, national recognized service organizations do the appeals, but we help basically to gather the information for appeal. I don't like appeals simply because I feel the best way to not go to an appeal is to do the claim work upfront. And I will tell you, the American Legion does the appeals for, um, the ones we do. And one of the things I always get blessed with is, we don't see a lot of appeals out of Jackson County because we try to do a fully developed claim in the front. So that's what we try to pride ourselves. There's just some you just can't miss, and a lot of times it's VA error that causes an appeal. Veteran debt applications, veterans be, can be indebted for numerous things. It's the veteran's responsibility to report a change of income, a change in, uh, marital status, and they don't. So what happens is when the VA catches up to it, it could be one, two years, they slap them with a debt. So we, we go through and we can do debt incurments or debt waivers, or set them up on a, a payment plan that can help resi, get that debt resolved for them so they can continue getting the benefits without having a huge, uh, financial impact on them. Healthcare enrollments, we're getting more and more healthcare enrollments through the VA. We assist with the application, we forward their application to the, um, Ann Arbor VA. We, we take, we take a lot of time to go over these because VA benefits aren't just because you're a veteran. There is a law from 2000 or, yeah, 2003 where George Bush put in the, uh, means test. So eligibility in VA, if you don't have service connection, is based on last year's income. So it really, you can be turned down and 200 bucks, I've seen people been turned away for VA care because of $200. So we try to work with them on getting some offsets to help lower that number. VA pensions, VA pensions is only afforded to wartime veterans and their surviving spouses. We assist with all that with the aid and attendance. Marker applications, simply any veteran, active-duty member is eligible for burial in a national cemetery or a private marker. Uh, National Guard and Reserves are not. So because the VA doesn't recognize National Guard or Reserves unless they've been deployed as veterans. DIC benefits is the dependency indemnity compensation. That's basically if a veteran passes away of a service-connected disability, the spouse is entitled to indemnity compensation, which can range anywhere from 1,600 to $2,000 a month. And the records request, we do a ton of records requests for DD 214s or veterans need, they think they need their medical records. So we do that, um, those requests. We have a partnership with the MVAA. They do house a lot of the Michigan veterans' records, the DD 214, so we're allowed to get some of those from them, but they're not all available. So we help with the, the request for the National Record Center. And here in the bottom, highlighted in red, go back to that last slide, please. We are a general fund expenditure office. There are other counties, um, Hillsdale, for instance, they are a, what they call Sailor Soldier Relief County. They are on a mileage. So they have relief funds. We don't have those relief funds, but other counties do. And it's all based on the funding mechanism that the county puts forth. So we, we do provide community resources unique to veterans, such as if they need transportation services, housing programs, food assistance and mental health referrals, to getting assistance to the veterans linked to the local entities that would help them. We don't have them, but we, we pride ourselves on putting together resources so we can help get these veterans to people that can help them with rental assistance and stuff like that. And then the last slide is kind of just a graph. We put in here from May to October, and it's color-coded with appeals, dependents, records. And you can see the trending of miscellaneous. We use miscellaneous because, oh, I could go into, that could be education, it could be a little bit of everything that we just don't report on every, because it's just, our business is so unique. The only two guarantees I can tell you in our office on a daily basis is one, I get to turn the computer on and I get to turn it off. I don't know what the day's gonna bring throughout because every veteran is, situation's different. There's none, two, two veterans are never alike. Even if they went in together, they still have a different experience. So that's the uniqueness of what we do. And so that just gives them a brief, a brief overview of kind of what our appointments are. And if, if you'd be, if, if someone has questions on it, I would love to sit down and break it down, cause my, uh, assistant does a nice job of keeping track with what we do.
Questions for the veterans' office? Hearing none, chair will entertain a motion to receive the report. Thank you, Commissioner Baer and Commissioner Williams. All in favor, will please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you. Happy holidays to all you.
You bet. Take care. And now the Health Department.
Badges clinking. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Um, the first item I have on the agenda is a request to distribute funds, um, through the opioid national settlement funds, the funds that we received. If you recall, um, we started, um, in 2022, somewhere around there with, um, an allocation of around $2 million, um, over the course of 18 years. That has now jumped up to about $5 million total over the course of 15 to 18 years. Um, and a couple of years ago, we came to you, um, suggesting that we, um, put a request for proposal to get some of this money out into the community. So the Health Department, um, alongside the Administrator's Office, has been, um, responsible for that. We're changing our timing a little bit on this one because we, previously with waiting for the funding to come out, we were following the Health Department's fiscal year, which follows the state October through September. Um, but this, this funding actually follows the county fund, so we wanted to get the, the second round, um, back onto the, um, not back, but onto the calendar funding, calendar fiscal year of the Administration Office. And with that, um, so in October, the last couple of months, we've been working on, um, putting a request out for about $300,000 that we have available, um, to distribute. We've, uh, received five different proposals. The scoring rationale of each of those proposals, listen on an attachment that you have, um, as well as, um, just a brief overview of what each of those proposals that we received kind of was about and who the target audience was for. Um, the Health Department has a committee that has reviewed them and scored them and made a recommendation. Um, and our recommendation is to, um, distribute, uh, 100,000 to three different groups, family services and children's aid, to a pilot program for Empowering Moms. It's actually for families as well, so Empowering Moms, it's not just inclusive to moms. Um, Home of New Vision, their Bridge to Wellness Program, and then Andy's Place, uh, for some security, uh, continuation of coverage for them, for 100,000. I will note that, um, on the, uh, in the staff report, and E in scoring benefits, it does indicate the amount that each of those organizations requested. Um, that $100,000 that we are proposing giving to each of those organizations, Home of New Vision and Andy's Place, that is less than they actually requested. Um, so it would be a contingent upon them, um, being able to show us how they could use that, that decrease in their ask and how they could use that effectively.
Questions for the Health Department on this topic? So if, let's say they say, oh boy, 100,000 isn't enough, we really needed the larger amount, then we would have to, and, and they decide not to take it, I suppose, in that case. Then we would figure out what to do.
We would figure out what to do with it. It could just, uh, one of two things, I'd probably come back to you with that, um, with, you know, do we want to re, go out to bid or anything for that? Go further down the line on, in the, um, scoring proposals and see, you know, if someone else was available. There'd be a multitude of different kind of alternatives, I think we could come up with that. Or we just wait until the, you know, don't distribute that 100,000, but that would be all, um, at the discretion of the board.
Okay.
Very unlikely anyone's gonna turn down 100,000.
Just, just asking. Just asking. Chair will entertain a motion to adopt the staff recommendation and make the recommendation of the full board of these awards. Commissioner Williams and Commissioner Willis, thank you. Any further comments? All in favor, will please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Proceed with the rest of your report, please.
So, um, again, um, as I stand before you, I have a pretty standard monthly report. Couple of things I want to point out to you, I'll jump right to page three. Um, skip over page one and two, I'm obviously happy to answer any questions if you do have anything on it there, but just due to, you know, the interest of time and some of the things that I generally talk to you about. First of all, on the WIC program, you'll, the WIC program, immunizations program, you'll see that, um, there are two poster presentations, or quality improvement projects that we've worked at over the, over the last year or two at the Health Department that were selected for, um, presentation at the Michigan Premier Public Health Conference. So we had, um, some of our staff members from WIC and some of our staff members from immunizations go and present. That poster, um, is a lot bigger in person, and if you need to see it, you know, larger, I can definitely send you a link. I kind of copied, you know, what was in there, but this was, um, a quality improvement project to work on, you know, wait times and how long it was taking to get our, um, mothers and their children into the WIC office. And so we have, um, created and still continue to use, based on, uh, the data that was collected from that, a, um, an open day, oh, walk-in day, that's the word I was looking for, a walk-in day and walk-in times where, um, if our, our appointments are scheduled out and we can't find a time to get someone in within, um, a lot of timeframe that they're allowed, they can always come in those walk-in times, um, that we will, you know, either wait, they, they'll sit there and wait until we have a time available. But it's worked very well on, on meeting that accommodation and getting people in, in our proposed times. And then the second one, uh, poster that we presented that was at the Michigan Premier Public Health Conference, was, um, a hybrid waiver program. This is something that we started, um, a, a few years ago. Then Livingston kind of goes back and forth when you listen to them, tell the, tell the story of how this all came to be. But through, um, COVID and some of that, as, as you can see with our waiver numbers, we get really bombarded with waivers for those who, um, want exemptions from their, um, immunization for their child going into school. A lot of that happens in the back-to-school time. Um, and one of the things, we, we were looking for ways, not just to make it easier, but to make it, um, more effective and more valuable for those who are, uh, requesting a waiver. And, um, what, so basically to tell you, we started that a couple of years ago. Livingston, um, kind of jumped on board with us and they improved our process. And then, um, we improved our process in response to theirs. And so we actually co-presented with Livingston County, um, this, this waiver project. Um, what happens now is that, uh, and before an individual makes an appointment, um, to come and get a waiver for their kids, there is an online survey and, um, information that's provided to that, that community member. That member watches that, takes any notes, has any questions that they, um, want to come in. And so then when they come in, instead of our, um, educator or our standing there and, and spouting off information to them that that person may or may not really want to hear or be, um, apt to hear, if they have actually questions, we can spend that time, actually answering the questions are important to that community member. Um, it doesn't, it's, it's not an effort to decrease our waiver numbers. In fact, that hasn't happened over the time, but it's just to make it more efficient and, and better process for, for our community members and for that time that they're in the office to be, um, more valuable than just, like I said, us viewing that information. The third quality improvement project is, we hoped, I hope to share more about it in the future, but our type-two water supply, our non-community water supply program, um, each of those non-community water supplies, and those are, um, things like schools, businesses that are on well water, um, churches, anyone who, I think it's over 20, that serves over 25 individuals on 60-plus days of the year. So think of those kind of places, churches, restaurants, that are not on a municipal water supply, have a well water supply. They have to do certain routine sampling and things like that of their water. One of the issues we were coming, and one of the things that's very important, is where that, for instance, where that water comes from, what spigot or what, what source of water that comes from. It is the responsibility of the business owner to provide that and send that to the, um, state, but what we were seeing was a lot of times they were incorrect and costing business owners a lot of time and effort and money that was then they had to repeat because it wasn't done correctly and, um, adequately the first time. So, um, our type-two now coordinator and deputy health officer has worked to, um, we have one day a month right now where our, uh, sanitarian who works in the type-two program primarily, will sit at the front desk. Anybody can bring those in, we take them, we make sure all of their paperwork's filled out, we make sure that it was sourced from the right, um, location. All of the, you know, checks all of the boxes before it's sent, and then we deliver it to the state lab in Lansing. Therefore, it's a cost savings to the business owner, and it also ensures that those are accurately able to be processed by the state. So, um, looking forward, that just started, the last, I think it said September, we started working on that. So we'll see how that goes over the next couple of months. But so far, we've, we've been able to stop a few people that would have sent theirs to the state, that would have been sent back to them, and they would have had to resend it to the state. So, you know, just that in and of itself, the more we can kind of catch those things ahead of time is good, good news. So, other than that, everything else is pretty standard. I'll take any questions that you might have.
Questions for the Health Department. Commissioner Baer.
Thank you. Hi, Kristen. Under your community outreach, um, can you tell me what, uh, what services, what opportunities you brought to the Interfaith Shelter and to the, uh, parent-teacher conferences?
I can tell you for parent-teacher conferences, for most of our outreach event, we are often going at a tabling type of event where we go and we take information about everything that the Health Department offers. So if someone has a question, we have QR codes that direct them directly to our different programming. So if someone has a question about, um, WIC, or someone has a, a question about our maternal infant health program, all the way to, you know, how do I get a rate on test? We, we can direct, we, we give that information out. So a lot of that is tabling events. And for, um, back-to-school programs and, and things like, uh, conferences and things like that, that's exactly what that is. Now in, in August, July and August, when we're doing some of those, um, at the schools, things like, um, kindergarten orientation, um, things like that, we're doing a little bit more. We may have our hearing and vision staff right there that can do some of that service and to them, we may have, um, an immunization staff who could pull the immunization records for child. So sometimes those are targeted a little bit more specifically to the needs of what people might come there. I can't, for Interfaith Shelter, I, I can't speak exactly what these were, cause I don't know exactly what this event was, but my, most likely it is to provide, um, resources and information to any of the, uh, residents at the Interfaith Shelter and connect them with services that we might have.
Okay. Well, the, uh, I always attended the parent-teacher conferences for my kids, and back when my kids were in school, um, I never saw the Health Department there, so thank you for...
I will say, for this one, for Concord specifically, um, if you recall, Concord is where we have a partnership with Concord School District, and it is, the school wellness program is housed out there. So we have two staff, a mental health provider and a, uh, nurse, public health nurse, that reside in that office out there through that collaboration with them, through the children's adolescent health center funding. I think it's CAHC, I'm trying to think of what the CAHC stands for. So that was a little bit targeted to try to say, because where we're located and where our school wellness program is located in the building, is a little off the beaten path from where, um, they hold the, the conferences for the, the kiddos. So that was a little bit targeted. Yes, we had our resources and our tabling information there, but it was also to help direct, um, and, and targeted for the school wellness program. So if any parents were coming in and had any questions about how the school wellness program runs or works, or want to sign paperwork, cause all of those individuals have to be consented, um, our health educator was there to direct them down to the school wellness program.
Okay. Thank you for providing those resources.
Further questions for the Health Department? Hearing none, the chair will entertain a motion to receive the report. Thank you, Commissioner Williams and Commissioner Willis. All in favor, will please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Uh, next item on the agenda, thank you, uh, Kristen, appreciate it. Uh, next item on the agenda, thank you, uh, Kristen, appreciate it. Next item on the agenda are claims. Claims have been around. Chair will entertain a motion to adopt the claims. Thank you, Commissioner Williams and Commissioner Baer. All in favor, will please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Uh, please take note of board minutes of the DHHS and the reporting schedule for next month. I don't see anything on there just now, Mr. Overton. I guess, uh, well, I suppose there will be somebody. And I see you have a new, a new crew member in your office, as of, at least as of today, yep. Uh, next item on the agenda is public comment. Public comment is now open again for three, uh, Tim, sorry, two-minute, uh, maximum, please. Any public comment? Any public comment? Last call for public comment. Public comment is now closed. Now committee member comments, please. Seeing none, we now adjourn to the.